All right, so. Let's call the meeting to order of the Urbana Planning Commission. And I don't believe we have any electronic participation, so we will move by that unless I'm told otherwise. So let's do roll call.
Ricky Longus.
Present, okay. Mary Hansen present.
Katie Wilson present.
Okay, and that is a quorum, and so let's look at the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or I guess I'll move for adoption of the agenda? And. So are, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second.
Second it, okay, and are there any questions, additions, deletions, discussion, that sort of thing? Nope, okay, and so let's have just a voice vote, just we can all say at the same time. That we accept the agenda, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
So, okay, all right. And so now, we've done the roll call, we've done the agenda. We need to approve the minutes of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Meeting. The draft minutes. And. I move that we. We approve them as presented in draft. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all right, so Mr. Longus seconds, and is there any discussion about the minutes? Okay, there being no discussion, I'll take a voice vote to adopt the. The approval of the draft minutes of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting, so. And I say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And so now we go, we move to the public hearing. And I believe this is the public hearing of twenty twenty five dash special use permit application dash zero two. Sean Pickett, and the ordinance is zero zero three dash twenty twenty five, and now. We will hear from Mr. Costin, the staff presentation.
Okay. Hey, how are you?
Okay, and let the record show that Gary Lister, another planning commission member, just arrived. Okay.
Chairman, as noted, this is the public hearing for twenty twenty five special use permit application zero two. Related to ordinance zero zero three, twenty twenty five, the necessary applications have been, notices have been given. And the. File is available for public review here in the office, and all in accord with section fifteen point two, twenty two zero four, code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. So you got something a little different tonight. First off, the applicant and his agent, who was supposed to be here, are not here yet. This case was to, basically had to be rescheduled, there was an advertising error last month. And it conflicted with the applicant's plans to attend a family wedding out of state. Or else he had said he would be here. I gave him the option, did he want to wait another month? He said, no, he would have his manager attend. And perhaps they will. So it's a little bit different tonight also because you're looking at amending conditions on a previously imposed special use permit. The location is one sixty one Cross Street, property owners Pickett Homes LLC. The applicant is Sean Pickett. This has been known as the Urban Oyster. I think they had to undergo a name change for some copyright issues, and they're now the Urbana Oyster. And is, the request is to revise conditions associated with twenty twenty four special use permit zero one. Which was granted to allow for retail sales of food and drink, together with arcade and board games across. Core game access permitted with special use permit by and subsequently a restaurant permitted with a special use permit. The acreage on the property, if you want to bring up the plat of the property, is one, it's point one seven one acres, more or less. Identified as tax map twenty eight seventeen eight, the zoning district is B one, the overlay district is the Chesapeake Bay zoning district, which pretty much affects the whole town. The use is a two-story historically mixed-use building. It is a mix of commercial and residential zoned adjacent properties and actual uses. This is a developed site and no exterior alterations are proposed that would alter the land as it exists, requiring any concerns to be addressed. The comprehensive plan has it as general retail and services. Supporting language, this request aligning to this designation is as follows. Expand the economic activities commensurate with the existing character and lifestyle of the local community. Encourage a diversified vibrant environment through mixed-use development. And provide an environment for the types of employment that will sustain the local workforce through their working years. Zoning compliance, various state agencies and contractors were contacted for comments on this case, and only the health department commented. Their comment was that outside seating would not alter the certificate of occupancy permitted, which is about twenty. The ordinance recognizes the authority to impose conditions to mitigate adverse situations related to the general health, safety, and welfare of those on. In or about the property. As this is an existing mixed-use area, the proposed use can be considered generally compatible, the most. Thus, most conditions imposed were to avoid nuisances such as condition five, noise, and condition three, hours of operation, the focus of this revision request. We've not received any complaints about the operation so far. And therefore, the determination to alter the conditions is based on considering the mitigation of adverse situations related to the general health, safety, and welfare. All right, as you go through the report, on the next page, on the second page, you see the original condition imposed. And the requested language. For the time. Then you have the condition imposed in the requested language for the service or seating area. Can you bring up the report so that I can be seen? So it's gonna be on the second page of the report. Little bit more. Come up just a little bit, what I mean up. All right, hold it right there, that's good, so you've got the.
Originally imposed condition. Was requested, originally imposed conditions, was requested, okay.
So. As to the hours of operation, the changes proposed will result in approximately fifty additional hours of activity. Regardless of total hours of operation or the hour in day, the occupancy limitation is twenty will serve to limit nuisances. Staff therefore suggest altering condition three as follows, and it would be in accord with the request. Hours of operation shall be Sunday nine to nine, Monday two, Monday twelve noon to ten P M. And Tuesday through Saturday, nine A M to nine P M. Now, also because of the occupancy limitation, there will be no additional crowd size associated with the proposed change. However, serving patrons outside, especially in the front, might encourage other patrons or those passing by to linger and create some nuisances. Therefore, staff would recommend this condition only be amended to allow at some future date, determined by the owner, rear patio service. You want to show those pictures? Therefore, staff would recommend this condition only be amended to allow that rear patio service. So there's, it's kind of inverted, but. The one on the bottom is the front, and the one on the top is the back. And that, of course, would have to be cleaned up a little bit to be able to use, that's why it's proposed to be further out. To this end, staff suggest altering existing condition five as follows. The use of permitted by special use permit are only permitted on the inside of the existing structure, there shall be no outside food or drink service or consumption. And no outside service seating shall be permitted, and this is where the change starts, on the front patio. Rear patio service may be initiated by the owner when deemed viable with notice to the town. However, in no case will outside seating alter the occupancy limit established by regulatory authorities. And then it goes on with the original, likewise, no outside speaker system may be utilized. And there should be no noise from inside the structure that is audible outside the structure. And then for reference, I gave you all of the original conditions. And I have proposed a motion for you. That would basically says that you would go along with the changes in condition three, as I've outlined, in condition five, as I've outlined. Of course, other options are available. Again, the applicant was unable to attend, and I don't see their agent, so I'd be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
So, am I understanding it would be open seven days a week?
It would be open seven days a week at some, some point in time during every day, yes.
Is, um, the A B C law, does it, does it restrict the hours within which alcoholic beverages can be sold? I mean, like nine A M, I don't know.
I think from Oyster Festival stuff, I remember there was either ten or eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I don't think it's nine A M.
But they serve other beverages besides alcohol.
But I am, I am wondering now.
Yeah.
I can check to find out when alcohol service is permitted as far as the morning.
Well, it would need to comply with what is required, I think that's the main thing.
But I don't think he has to line up his hours of operation.
Probably not.
Yeah.
Like he could do a Sunday brunch or something.
Yeah, right.
Serve, I don't know, little Jimmy serves alcohol in the morning, but I don't know when.
I don't know there.
When we first. Received this application, if you remember, there was quite a lot of neighbor complaints. And concerns about, more about parking and about noise.
Yes.
And I appreciate that there's been no complaints since they've been open. The. I guess my, my question. With approving ahead of time, the patio in the back, is that seems to me to be much more of a risk for noise. I also wonder if it would really be acceptable to him to keep that twenty person limit? Because I would assume the health department would say that a larger patio, you could have a.
No.
No?
What they're saying is twenty is it.
Because of the size of the kitchen?
Because of what, the size of the structure, size of the kitchen.
Yeah, they have, they have something.
If he expands his hours, or he expands his seating, he's still limited by the health department to twenty.
Really?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, he could have ten A back.
And ten inside.
And eight inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he could have, you know, he could spur them all around, but he's only can have twenty, twenty patrons.
Twenty at one time.
At one time.
Are you sure of that? Because I thought that.
I'm positive, that's, that's exactly why I stated in here that the only thing that we got back from the health department, their comment was the outside seating would not alter their certificate of occupancy permitted.
But is that, were they looking at, and I remember his application, he wanted the in front with the ability to add in back. You know, at a later date, where presumably he'd have to do construction, yeah, no, the.
So when, when we get these applications.
Yeah.
What I send to the reviewing agencies, and those are our water folks, H R S D, V dot, in the health department. Okay, I send them. Everything that you see in the packet after my staff report, so they get the actual application, they get the plat, they get the diagram. I'm not sure I sent them photographs, because I took those as part of the staff report, but they get everything that he submitted.
I can see your point, though, because if they're just looking at with the front right now, because he says at a later date, and they're not including, there probably needs some language to clarify that this means even with the addition of the patio.
Yeah.
In the back at a future date, it's still going to be twenty.
You know, that little space, I mean, I would think that I could see how adding two chairs or four chairs or whatever wouldn't add to the occupancy. I would worry that you add a back patio. I mean, it's sort of, doesn't make sense to me, I wonder if the health department really examined it with an eye to that. I mean, you may have asked them to, but they may or may not have focused on it, because I think that occupancy is based on. It's based on bathrooms, and it's based on space and other things, but I would worry that there'd be a twenty-person patio in the back, and maybe that's okay, but I would think.
That creates.
That creates something that neighbors might really complain about and might need to have an opportunity.
Hours to later.
Yeah.
We already, that was one of my problems, was that we're agreeing to something unknown in the future.
Yeah.
Kind of like.
That was what was in his application, was to do it at a later date. I'm going to read him between the lines and speculate, and it's just speculation, that the concept of the twenty-person limit. He can put people in the front, if you all allow, he could put people in the front, he can put people inside, he can put people outside. It rains, everybody's coming inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty people, so you can't have twenty, more than twenty people at any time, because all twenty people may have to come into. The, into the building, yeah. So that's what my thinking was, is regard, and again, it could be tied to the number of bathrooms, the space, the size of the kitchen, the overall size of, you know, of the building. But that's what they came back to me with was, we're fine with this as long, but it won't change his occupancy, he's capped at twenty.
So one more question, just sort of following that thought process, so the condition, as you did it, said with notice to the town. But notice doesn't require him before he puts in a patio in the back to do anything, right? Like, we're giving permission for him to put a patio.
Expand out to the back, whatever he wants, yes.
He wants. I don't, I don't think that's a good idea.
Like, he needs to come forth with actual plans when he's ready to do that.
Isn't that normally what you would have to do?
Add the front part, extended hours, but not approve something that we don't know what we're approving.
Right, yeah.
I would put a timeline on that, I would give him one year.
To.
To open his backyard.
And to present the plan to the town.
And if he, if he, well, he's, either way, the plans, he still has to abide by the twenty-person.
Right.
Limit, so, and he's probably gonna go over that, he's probably gonna hope that he don't get caught, you know, you've got twenty-two, who's gonna say anything? But if we, if we give him an open door to the patio, and he does it in three years. I think it should be done.
What if we change that, if you go into that language? Can you roll down a little bit?
That's the, the condition.
Yeah, 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 right there, I'll hold it right there, Christine.
Condition imposed.
Yeah, well, what, or you say rear patio service may be initiated by the owner?
What if we inserted, subject to review by the planning commission? Just have somebody else look at it.
Well, or even subject, or something based on. Not the assumption, based on the assumption that occupancy will not change.
Well, if you go on to the next sentence, it says, however, in no case will outside seating alter the occupancy limit established by regulatory authorities, that would be the health department.
Well, except that I would worry that outside seating won't, that suggests to me, I would interpret that. As whatever the occupancy limit established by regulatory authorities, in that if the health department then comes back and says. Well, now with those spaces, you can do thirty people, because for example, you think about, and I won't tend to know, but like. And I've been out of town for two weeks, so I forget.
Yeah, I was surprised.
What's the burger?
Small Town Burger.
Thank you. It's across the street from me, you'd think I would know, but Small Town Burger doesn't have seating in the rain, and they, yet, they, I just, I don't know what the health departments. I would worry we're giving him permission, should the health department say it's forty.
Oh, I have a.
I think if we, if we simply say that.
So long as.
He will need, yeah.
To increase the occupancy limit, he would need to apply to.
For another special.
For another town.
Permit.
Okay. And then say all that, what if we just said, however, in no case will outside seating, will, will, will outside seating. Alter the existing occupancy limit?
Yeah, which would then be the twenty, yeah.
That'd be the twenty, okay.
So he would have to, if he was going to do that, he would have to.
Represent.
Represent, yeah.
So to change.
That would mean that we were allowing it, and I think you're saying, as long as it's done within a year.
Yeah, I don't see giving him pre-reign to do what he wants, when he wants, you know, if he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it within a year. Because he's gonna see how business is going, he should know where the business is going within a year's time.
Okay.
My, my concern with that would be, I mean, in this town, in my experience, you think something's gonna be done in three months, and it takes a year. Not because you're dragging your feet, but, you know, maybe you can't get anybody to pour the concrete, or you can't, you know how it is.
Well, could you say within like, two or three years, depending on how, what people, like, just to give up amount of time that should be? Or is, are we even allowed to request that?
It's just a patio, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, unless he does something really fancy, but.
Like expands the building or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that he would need permission.
Yeah.
Right.
Permits and all of that, to do that.
I think for clarity, if we still leave, in no case will outside seating alter the twenty-person occupancy limit? I just think it'd be clearer if we include that, like, the sentences you said it.
That, well, that's why he said the existing twenty person, I think if you say the existing twenty person.
Exactly.
Because if a regulatory body says you can have more. Then we don't want, we don't want to have a contradiction built in, so, yeah.
I agree.
Typically, just, you know, if, if a, if a state reg is in conflict with the. The town, the, what they call the higher standard shall prevail, so if they gave them thirty, we gave them twenty, our twenty is going to supersede, because that's the higher.
Okay.
That's the, the most restrictive, it's the higher standard, most restrictive.
I think it's just clear, and that nobody fights over it.
I can drop, I can drop the twenty in there. Okay, so we have after the phrase, on the front patio, rear patio service may be initiated by the owner. Subject to review by the planning commission within, I wrote down one year, I think that might still be one year of this approval. Okay, however, in no case will outside seating alter the existing occupancy limit of twenty persons.
Yeah.
Does that do it?
So we're asking for him to come up with a plan within a year, present it within a year.
Yeah.
Right.
And.
And in this case, you all would have the authority.
And, and I was gonna ask a procedural, and in that case, we could say yes or no, it wouldn't have to go to council.
Right, yeah.
Because this has to go to council, right?
This goes to council tomorrow night, yeah.
It's a public hearing, so it wouldn't require a public hearing.
Right, it would just be a plan review.
Okay.
A plan review.
But that gives the neighbors a little bit of confidence that somebody.
We're not just saying do whatever you want.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I do have a concern about the, the seating in the front. Could you pull the, the photo back up, please, Christine? Most of that front is a sidewalk, and the sidewalk should not be impeded at all.
So I think what he's talking about.
Sitting at that.
Is this little. Winkle shell gravel area.
Yeah.
Is putting it in there, so here's your public sidewalk.
Yep.
The flag is kind of.
Over the sidewalk, yeah.
But this is your public sidewalk. About that line right there. And what's in the shadow here.
Yeah, 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 I see.
So everything was.
So he could put another set of chairs potentially, that he can sit and have a drink up front.
Yes.
Is that within his boundary, so that he's not breaking any A B C laws or anything like that?
He'd basically be underneath the porch.
Right, yeah, that's within.
Well.
It is very small.
It's very small, and those are huge chairs, I mean, if you had a couple of cafe-sized tables or something with small chairs, I could see that they would fit there. But I think we need to make the point that it's, that it's not to. It's not to impede the sidewalk access.
Well, no.
One, one thing would change that, is if we require a fence from the sidewalk.
That's true.
Straight down the edge of the sidewalk.
Just in front of.
From that little corner where the little stainless steel bowl is flipped over or whatever, from there straight down to the cattle trough.
It's like an actual porch.
I, I see, you know, a lot of restaurants in places, like in Richmond or whatever, and they've got seating on the street, and all, they're backing their chairs, and like you said, the sidewalk. There was a sidewalk and somebody walking down.
Yeah.
Right.
Because you're naturally gonna move your chairs, especially in a tiny span.
Those are.
Go back to the paragraph.
Right, they're like, that like that, you can't rotate those, I don't believe, I think it's a table in between the two chairs.
I want to point out that. Right there, oh, okay, oh, go back one more. Go to four, four and five. Okay, so there's your existing, which is an absolute prohibition on any outside seating, okay, if you can go to prior pack, page eleven. Okay, so in language we said. For, I propose to say. There shall be no outside food or drink served, and no outside service shall be permitted on the front patio, so he asks for the front and later the back.
Go look at this, I'm saying no to the front.
Oh, I thought you were saying yes to the front.
I'm saying no to the front. Gentlemen, no outside service seating shall be permitted on the front patio.
Okay, so not just service, seating.
Right, so I've said no to the front for the reason that I think the front is gonna draw people, and people are gonna sit around and, and, and talk, and stop, and gather. And the front will become sort of an activity center, as opposed to the.
It's going to block the, okay, I misunderstood what you.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
See, I thought they were.
I thought you were permitting it too.
He was asking for the front.
No, I, I know, I know that, but I thought in reading this, I misread.
He's asking for the front, but I'm saying no to the front, but yes, yes to the rear, and now we've got you all's conditions, you know.
And that's because you think the front people will hang around and, and expand.
Yep.
However, serving patrons outside, especially in the front, might encourage other patrons to linger.
Do you remember which neighbors complained?
I think the Wiley's were worried about it, because they're right next door.
Right next door.
It was the Wiley's.
The only concern.
It was also the person who owned the.
They go with the driveway.
Yellow, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. The only concern I would have to saying. I mean, I would think the front, in some ways, might be fine, I can see the concerns you have about people hanging out. The only. Concern I have with saying no to the front is that's really gonna precipitate him to push on the back. And I don't know if that's more of an.
Maybe that's not such a bad thing. On the other hand, if I was a business owner, it's great advertising to have a couple people seated out front.
True.
Maybe. I don't know, maybe we need to say that it needs to be, it needs to be enclosed by, by. Fencing, you know, fence.
Go back to the picture, please.
People from loitering around.
He asked for a limit on how many people in front.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
He asked for four?
Well, I think he asked for two tables.
Yeah, two tables, four tables.
Four tables.
So you figure four people.
Maybe you say one table.
He's already got that there.
No, these are just seats.
Are they?
He wants up to four people outside?
If he's set up.
Well, it'd be two little tables then, right?
Yeah, probably two.
If he was talking.
High tables, kind of like what they have at something different, with the higher tables.
Across the street, and I have not had an issue with this at all, I mean, people go there, locals generally, and they're not rowdy, obnoxious. I mean, maybe at Oyster Festival, that would be different, but it's, it's different anyway.
Yeah.
It's not like it, I mean, there's people everywhere at Oyster Festival, that's not a normal representation, I think, I could see his reason for wanting it to be in the front, because it's. People are there, I mean, half the time you drive by and you don't know if it's open, because.
You can't.
And he gets hit.
And I think, I mean.
But it also tends to be inside, other groups or just couples sitting quietly.
And I don't know if you can make some sort of like, loitering comment, like, if you have, you have to have a seat to be out front, unless people are walking by to just say hi for a few minutes.
Right.
You can't.
On that edge.
Yeah, I know.
Stand and have a drink, you have to have an actual seat to be on the patio.
I think that's pretty hard to regulate, that's pretty hard to regulate. Then the other thing is, is there are times when there, you know, it's a special weekend or something in town, where you have people waiting at the door. You know, so does that mean they can't wait at the door? That, we don't want to impede his business. But we want to, it sounds like we want to protect the. Noise concerns and the crowding concerns, that sounds like what we're going for, right? Yeah.
Well, and, and back when you mentioned earlier, my, my first concern was traffic. But if, if he's only allowed twenty patrons. If they all drove single vehicles, you've got twenty cars on the road. It's not likely to happen, but if it did, and once you get down below that white car in that picture.
Yeah.
You get to Mr. Wiley's property, they probably don't want people parking on the street, but if you're driving my truck, and there's five cars on the side of that street. Whoever's on the other end's gotta wait for me to get through.
Yeah, that's right.
Because of my mirrors.
Right.
And, and not, not worried about my truck, but emergency vehicles. And and not not worried about my truck, but emergency vehicles. If if there was a. Situation and they needed to get through there.
We talked about that when we permitted it originally.
On the opposite side, it actually is a fire. It's like a, they need to repaint it, but there, there's a big old yellow streak. Which should be repainted probably by Vidal.
So the original approval did not question the seating, I mean, the car.
No, it, but.
It was a good.
It came up at like.
It was a.
Came up at length. So there was a long discussion and there was discussion as to from the building across the street was worried people would park there. The neighbors were concerned about parking. And.
Parking's always an issue in Urbana, though.
It is.
Like, but also, do you, do you think people are gonna be concerned about the ten o'clock? Closing time? I mean, I don't know, what is, in terms of the rest of the restaurants, are they open till ten or is it nine generally?
Nine.
But I, but that's business based. When I actually had a conversation with Sarah about that, and she said. They always used to be open till ten, but after COVID.
They don't have enough.
Everyone goes to bed now.
Yeah.
You know, we're all.
Yeah.
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 And Little Jimmy stays open till ten.
Yeah, but they usually have music and stuff.
Right.
I mean, I personally don't see a problem with the front seating. I think it would eh enhance the appeal of the place, but maybe some sort of low fence. If it's possible to do that and walk around, I don't know if safety wise you can.
I'll I'll be a little, I'd be a little concerned about.
It's really tight.
Yeah. Well, then I'd worry somebody would trip and hit the sidewalk.
Well, and also it's all like oyster shells right now, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, he's obviously gonna have to do some.
Some landscaping or something.
Yeah, I would think he'd move the planner.
Probably put some sort of patio or something.
You know, especially side, we'd probably have to move. Depending on how we set the tables, I would see. Like a chair, a table, a chair, so that one chair facing this way, one chair's facing that way.
Yeah.
And then repeated in this area.
They could do it up against the, between the windows, couldn't they? I mean, like something like that.
That whole, whole building is his, isn't it?
The what?
The whole building is his.
The whole building is.
If, so even the door on the end there.
That's a.
Access to go upstairs.
Yeah, right. But like where that planner is, as you said, all of that could probably go.
Right.
What if, and this is just a thought, what if we permitted him to have seating on the front with no tables? And if if some patrons were waiting to be served inside and they had reached their twenty. Person.
They could have a drink outside.
They could sit and have it.
What he's got there is kinda nice. There's little chairs with the little, I think there's a table in between.
Even all that, or or maybe four chairs or six chairs along the wall where people could sit in them.
Or a bench seat or something.
Right, but not, not be able to.
Don't think you can have any alcohol outside.
I think you can.
If it's a defined area.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Um.
Okay.
Said it will allow it.
You can be standing on the sidewalk having a.
No, I think you can.
I think coming from his door over across.
And I think to get to that defined area.
Yeah.
We go back to having to. Then sit for some way demarcate the area.
Yeah.
You know, I'm.
Would just be a fence along the front.
Yeah, not on the side, just to define. The boundary of the restaurant.
Right.
Like pull the bulb.
To like a corner.
No, like right along the sidewalk. Right, on the side.
Like a low, lower fence.
Yeah, just to.
Just to define the boundary of where.
To define the boundary so that.
There, there possibly could be uh five or six people sitting down and three or four standing, waiting to be served.
Yeah, right.
Um, because of his, his twenty.
Yeah.
Head count. Then that would give him some type of overflow. He could still. Serve a drink. Or they could come in and get a drink and go back out. He could still serve a drink, so we're not saying you can't have any business.
Right.
But we don't want people hanging out on the street.
Okay, but following that logic, those people who'd gone in and gotten a drink would still be part of the twenty.
Right.
Correct.
So if you had people waiting to get in, that, you know, again, there's already twenty in, you can't also, you can't also have. I guess I don't, I don't understand how you regulate people waiting versus people sitting unless they're seated on a patio. A defined patio as counting toward the people inside.
They have some sort of food or drink, I would think they were a customer, you know.
I think if they're on the patio.
Do they?
They would have, they would be.
Do they really have crowds waiting? I've never seen a crowd there, but.
I've the, I've only seen like for special things, like the wine and oyster stroll and things like that, which is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also the sidewalk ends like shortly thereafter. People usually walk on the other side of the sidewalk if they're actually wa- I never walk on this side of the sidewalk. I walk on the other side. Before I get to his.
Well, it ends, it ends down there on the other side of the.
Right.
Anyway.
Right, so I mean, I don't think it's blocking traffic flow, people walking per se either. I think it's more of a destination than a.
I think that we need to make it clear that the patrons, the seated patrons cannot spill over. And. Yeah, cannot spill over onto the sidewalk.
I think if you had some sort of fence, like attractive looking fence.
Metal, little metal.
So metal or pick, white picket fence or something. Hey, it's Amy Shaw Pickett, you can pick a fence.
They could string a rope down there and put a couple pokes.
Yeah, or like a, like a boat rope.
Like boat rope, yeah, make it nautical.
But to make it a defined boundary, so people know if you're here, this is you're being served. If you're here, you may be walking by saying hello, but you're not.
But you're not being.
You're not part of the.
And then that way, it makes it clear for him.
Yeah.
That those in that area count toward the twenty.
Right. So maybe saying creating some sort of defined attractive boundary.
Yes.
That complies with the town.
At, at least along, at least along the sidewalk.
Yeah, and even maybe towards where that door is to go upstairs, like that could be, and and unless you have to have two e- exits for some reason, I don't know if you do.
But I think if you add seating properly, you know, that could be a benefit and make it look nicer.
Yeah, I think.
Attractive for his business.
Absolutely.
And and for the street and lawn.
Far, he's done a fantastic job cleaning up the property. Inside looks great. I mean, it's clean. He's been a very respectful neighbor. I mean, I'm right across the street. I never hear any issues.
Right.
I mean, occasionally there's too many cars, but that's not necessarily his problem. It could be him from town, so.
Um, so can we?
I'm I'm work, I'm working something up. I'm I'm working something up.
It's like we generally agree that it it could be helpful to his business.
Absolutely.
We don't want it spilling over onto the sidewalk. We don't think that people who are seated there should be ca- we think they should be counted toward the twenty. But not patrons who are standing in line waiting at the door.
Oh.
And so it would delineate that a little bit.
And I don't foresee like gigantic crowds unless it's Oyster Festival and then people are trying to check out this new plate.
Well.
But that's everywhere in town. I mean, there's huge crowds around every restaurant.
And the same thing with the wine stroll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, cause he's small.
But I think some sort of definition that's attractive and not, that is safe for health.
And at least along, at least along the sidewalk, the front sidewalk boundary.
Yep.
I also think that if we let him do this and it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
That's useful to know.
Yes, that's true.
Only, only if he breaks.
A rule.
Other, a can, a rule about, you know, he he breaks one of these, any one of these conditions can make it, bring it back up for.
Okay.
Can I ask you, if if we let him do, you know, the limited seating in front, we've said he has proposed the rear patio to us. And let's say, you know, every obstreperous guest hangs out in front and it, and it becomes an issue. Can't that then inform our decision on whether to approve or not approve his rear patio design?
Uh, yeah, yeah, when it comes back up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I was thinking, okay, so this is what I've got so far, um, but I wanna add one more thing in here. Okay, this is what I've got so far. Okay. Can we go back to the condition so they could kinda see? That paragraph that kinda outlined this. Okay.
I'm gonna start reading right there.
So the uses permitted by the special use permit. Are permitted on the inside of the existing structure. Comma. On a defined. Fenced front patio. Comma. And on a rear patio. Where service. May be initiated by the owner, subject to review by the planning commission within one year.
Now, that's all pertaining to the patio in the back.
I, I would say instead of where the service, something like. Uh, can't remember exactly the word, to the extent that. Can you read back the part of the sentence where you talk about the rear, the front?
Okay, yeah, so we said that we got the in- inside the building, okay, we've got the front patio fenced, okay? And um. On a rear patio. I had where service may be initiated by the owner. Subject to review by the planning commission within one year of this approval.
It's the service that may be approved.
I would say something like.
Your syntax.
Comma, to the extent that.
What?
The owner. Seeks to. Install a rear patio as subject to approval or something like that. I think you need it, you need a limiting, not just a where.
Why, why is this one long, long uh sentence? I think we should have the first two. And then somehow a period.
I think as to the rear patio.
As to the rear patio as a separate thing, so that it can't be misread that something in the latter applies to.
Or like keep your sentences as they were. Rear patio service may be initiated by the owner, and then you revised it before. Subject to approval. Yeah, yeah.
Uh huh.
Keep those sentences separate.
All right, so here we go.
Plan approval.
Of the uses permitted by a special permit are permitted on the inside of the existing structure. And on a defined front patio, a fenced front patio. As to the. Rear patio.
I I would period and then do your sentences that you had in the back. You revised the last two sen- sentences already. The three.
He's rereading it, yeah. He's not typing it.
No, I know, but I think rather than, as you suggested, rather than included in one long sentence.
That's right, I did, I said period. I said period. As to the rear patio. But you said to keep it what we had. Service may be initiated by the owner, subject. To review by the planning commission within one year of this approval.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, but.
Subject to, I think, what is it that we're wanting to approve? I think we're wanting to see a plan.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Want to give people a public comment, too, I think, to.
You kept your sentence.
Not if it's just a.
However, in no case will outside seating alter the occupancy. Uh, existing, existing occupancy of twenty persons. Um, I'd like to add then um that also in at no time shall the public sidewalk be um blocked.
Impeded, yeah.
Okay, I had one question about the. That said, said the patio area should be fenced. Does it need to be fully fenced?
Or defined, maybe defined.
Defined by a fence.
By a fronted fence.
Along the.
Or a distracted, some sort of roping or something.
Right. But but my point is you might not need all those sides.
A boundary, a physical.
It mainly would go.
Aesthetic boundary.
Here, straight down.
Right.
And they mentioned coming back across to determine that doorway.
Yeah.
And that sidewalk, but if if.
But I think the condition as written, if you just say it needs to be fenced, that.
But could he define it as fully defined? Or anything like that?
There's not enough.
There's not enough.
Fence with separation determining sidewalk.
Unless you get something low profile, which could be a tripping hazard.
Yeah.
Yep. Not there.
The best is a fence along the sidewalk.
Right, okay, uh huh. Kinda like something that.
Maybe instead of saying fenced patio, maybe a patio with. Fencing.
Find borders.
Defining the border between the patio and sidewalk.
Sensing or like it.
No.
No.
Just I think, I think we should say something like. Patio with a defined boundary. Delineating it from the sidewalk. Such boundary could be.
Or.
But then somebody could put a brick line.
Yeah, you could just paint a line.
No, no, such boundary could be. A fence.
Nautical rope.
But why not just say partially fenced. Along the front, the sidewalk.
Because then you're partially fencing it along the sidewalk. You're wanting to say that it needs to be along the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Not partially along the sidewalk.
No, but it's a partial.
Partially fenced, comma, along the sidewalk or something.
Along the.
I, I would read that as that you wouldn't have to have the whole piece of the sidewalk. You just have to have part of it.
Oh, fenced along the sidewalk edge.
Yeah, the simplest, yeah.
Yeah. At least fenced along the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Then overflow.
Right, yes, yeah, right, and explain why, yeah.
What you do, you don't have to go into your rationale. Don't, no, you're gonna complicate it if you go into your rationale.
If we're then arguing about it later.
I gotcha.
Yeah, just what is it you want, you know? So. All right, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pie- piece this back together. The users permitted by a special use permit are permitted on the inside of the structure. Um, and. On a defined.
Sidewalk.
But but, well, defined patio along the sidewalk.
Yes.
Defined patio along the sidewalk.
Why not just say a front patio?
And uh.
What about?
Front patio defined along the sidewalk.
So we're talking.
And then as to the rear. Patio may be initiated by the owner, subject to review by the planning commission within one year of this approval. However, in no case will outside seating alter the occupancy, the, the existing occupancy limit of twenty persons. And at no time shall the public sidewalk be impeded.
I think in that last, that last bit about the rear patio, I think we need to say what it is that is being approved by the planning commission with, um, a, a plan submitted and approved by.
Subject to, uh, subject to plan review.
Yes, plan.
Plan review by the.
Plan review, plan review. I don't think that was clear in there.
Okay.
But I think we're still back at how, how can we make that? Um, bit clearer about. The, what do you have now for the, the front part?
For the front part? Okay, so we got inside the building, um, and on a defined. Fenced patio along the sidewalk. Then it goes as to the rear. So it just says a defined front patio.
I think that's still difficult because it suggests has to be fully fenced.
Along the sidewalk side of the patio?
Well, or why not just say a, a front patio so long as it is fenced along the sidewalk?
Along the sidewalk edge?
Yeah, edge is better, yeah.
Cause then that defines it's.
So a front patio, comma, so long as it is fenced along the sidewalk edge.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that.
Rather than.
Then it's, it's not limited, he could do the whole thing.
Rather than, uh, so long as needs to be provided.
Okay.
Provided. Are you catching some of this? Uh, I'm, I'm going to have to write this tonight or else I'm going to lose it, okay?
So long as you don't have to transcribe all our versions.
Yeah.
After much discussion, they came up with. Yeah, alright. Shall I try to reread it one more time or, okay? The uses permitted by the, uh, special use permit are permitted on the inside of the structure and on a defined front patio along the sidewalk edge.
No. Front patio, comma, provided that. The patio is fenced.
Provided.
The sidewalk edge.
The front.
Provided that the front patio.
Is fenced.
Patio.
It's fenced along.
Along the sidewalk edge.
Fenced along the sidewalk edge, okay, got that, okay. Uh, and then we say as to the rear. Um, patio, uh, service may be initiated by the owner, subject to a planned review by the planning commission within one year of this approval. Then we go on to say, however, excuse me, in no case will outside seating alter the occupancy limit. The, excuse me, the existing outside, the existing occupancy limit, uh, of twenty persons. And at no time shall the public sidewalk be impeded. And then likewise, no outside speaker system.
It sounds bad.
I think we got it yet?
I think so.
Alright.
I think it'll be good for him to have that kind of outside presence that will attract business.
And he's not, he's not going to be able to serve there, so, and if he does.
No, he says that he can't serve there.
Yeah, but if somebody walks in with a drink, they're still in that number.
They're still in twenty, yeah. If they walk out the door and turn into the defined area.
Yeah.
They're still, they're still good, yeah.
So let's say Oyster Festival is here and he exceeds his twenty, that's not on us, that's on his.
Yeah, I mean.
Somebody else, somebody else would have to, would have to.
And the health department doesn't check that.
Do they?
That's kind of open, it, it's, it's wide open to want an Oyster Festival, you know? I just looked away at a lot of different things come at Oyster Festival.
Well, and, and in thinking that and, and trying to help this guy, would, would we want to say something that Friday and Saturday on Oyster Festival, he would be permitted to serve?
No, the, the Oyster Festival is in a whole nother world. They, they, they come under the special events provision.
Yeah.
And that's a whole nother permit.
So he, he, he possibly could have something through the Oyster Festival.
Yep.
That's not our domain.
And we just don't.
Right.
Yeah.
But the health department does, they're very much on site.
They do the inspections and stuff like that. They'll do the inspections.
Yeah.
But they're not going to be able to tell.
What we're doing is allowing him to have some people on the sidewalk to show that he's in business.
On his patio, on his patio, yeah, on his patio.
And then, uh, then he's, Oyster Festival, he's on another.
He's under, he and every, and, and something different and every, yeah, little, everybody wants something.
Something different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're in a completely different, they're under a completely different permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just want him to understand that, you know, we want him to, to make it, you know?
But I think this is good. I think we're letting him do what he wants.
Right. But he's got.
Within a reason.
Right, yeah. To know what to work with.
Right.
And I think he wants to comply. I don't think he's trying to pull one over on anybody. He's been very respectful and.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wants to, yeah.
May I ask a question? The, we're requiring him to submit a plan. Does that require notice to neighbors? Like the normal process and that kind of thing?
It would not, not the way this is written. No, it would be, what do you guys think?
Okay.
And, and, and I'm going to go to a little sidebar here. There's a recent piece of state legislation that puts a lot less. Deviation on submission of Platts and plans to the planning commission, to the governing body, to administration, okay? It's a checklist. If you've got everything on the checklist addressed, it has to be approved. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if it goes through me, the planning commission, the town council.
Those requirements.
They meet those requirements, yep. Yeah, now what, the, 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 the pinch on this is they still haven't removed the allowance for public input, for public hearings. So you get to go through this.
And the public can complain.
Pointless.
And you're, it's pointless.
It's pointless because if they meet the administrative things that are laid out there. And this, again, this is by state code and Dillon Rule State, we, we.
Right.
We're a subdivision of the state, we have to follow.
Yeah.
That provision. And so if he comes in here and he submits a plan and it's the low profile fence like you like it, and then there, it's like, yes, you're going to, there's no sense in having a public hearing.
Yeah.
Because no matter what anybody says.
It is.
You gotta pay for a public hearing, but yet you can't say.
It doesn't make any difference.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the staff presentation's over.
So, and we've.
Unless you all have any questions.
Um, the discussion that we want to have?
Yeah.
I think so too. And so let's deal with an action on.
Uh, if, if it's just, I'll leave for the record, just call for public comment.
Okay, pub, public comment, any public comment? Okay, no public comment. And, um, so a sample motion and that would be that I move to recommend approval of revisions to conditions three and five originally imposed with the granting of special use permit twenty twenty four dash oh one as recommended by staff and as amended, right?
As amended.
As amended. And so, um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there further discussion? Okay, voice vote and that's just all an aye.
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 Okay. And. Alright, do we have other matters?
Alright, you do, and I'm going to let the clerk present that one.
Okay.
You should have, um, well, good evening, first of all. You should have a copy in your packet of some draft bylaws and rules of procedure. According in Code of Virginia fifteen point two dash twenty two seventeen, the local, local planning commission shall adopt rules for the transaction of business and shall keep a record of its transactions. So the bylaws are pretty much just based off the, um, council's bylaws and then kind of tweaked to say planning commission and commissioners rather than, um, council. And it just goes through, um, the beginning is, you know, that the town established the planning commission, the purpose is, uh, what's laid out in code. The membership is also what's laid out in code and council chose five members rather than seven. Um, then it talks about, you know, that you have to have a chair and you have to have a secretary. And just goes through all of that, talks about your meetings. You all had chose the second Wednesday of each month at six o'clock in the chambers. Then if a meeting falls on a holiday, it goes to the next week. The next paragraph says, if the chair or the vice chair, if the chair is unable to act, finds and declares that weather or other conditions are such that it is hazardous for commission members to attend a regularly scheduled meeting. The meeting shall be continued till the following Tuesday at, at six P M. Um, and then it says such findings shall be communicated to the commission and posted on the, um, town website. All hearings and other matters previously advertised shall be conducted at the continued meeting and no further advertisement is required. That's something that's also right out of code. It gives you the ability to say, you know, like tonight, if, uh, if it was a tornado warning and you felt it was not safe for people to come out. Um, you could call for it to be continued and then we'd come back. I guess I should say Wednesday, because, yeah, next Wednesday.
Yeah, I think that would be better because then it wouldn't.
It wouldn't get confused.
Yeah.
Right, um. And, and that also protects us from like tonight, we had the public hearing, we already advertised a public hearing. And codes as we don't have to do it again if we have this statement in our rules of procedure. Um, then it just goes through, you know, you have to, um, keep, you have to make a motion. You can suspend the rules, you're going to choose Robert's Rules of Order as you're governing. Practice confidential and privileged information that you won't share it with anyone. Uh, the public hearing order of business would be staff presentation, applicant's press, presentation. Open the hearing, receive public hearing comments, close the hearing, applicant's rebuttal, commission discussion and action. Then, um, speakers, this is just the same thing, um, that's in the councils, five minutes. Um, and then it goes through, you know, keep your, keep your reports concise. Meaning us, our reports to you, um. And. Then it goes through how you adopt it, um, and how you can change it.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it.
And what we're required to have it.
Requested on this.
Um, the sample motion would be I move to approve the twenty twenty five commission bylaws. With.
Okay.
As amended.
Staff recommendation, so, um, I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five planning commission bylaws as amended and presented. Because you did have an, one amendment in there. Is there a second? Because then we can do discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? What discussion do you want?
Is this right from now until forever or is this like a times, like to review?
The law, the law change, requirement changes.
Okay.
Or you decide to change it. You know, if you suddenly decide five minutes isn't enough, we want ten minutes, you can, you can change that.
So we're currently agreeing to this until somebody brings up.
Yeah, until either the law changes or you, you all change your mind.
I don't have it in front of me. Is the five minute limit on any speaker or is it on the applicant and the?
It's on the public.
Okay.
It says that the applicant should keep theirs to about ten minutes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that's in the code, isn't it? That, that if, if it's a land use that they, you have to give them at least ten minutes.
Yeah.
So.
Is that required by law?
Yes.
Typically, we've always said that the applicant and staff was unlimited.
Yeah.
But I do try to, I, you notice I didn't read every word of.
I know, yeah, I know, thank you.
Try to concise and cut them down, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, there's that due process, equal protection thing of they are the one paying for it, yeah.
Right.
Uh huh, uh huh, that's true.
Well, and some things are harder to explain than other.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Yeah.
And if you have a lot of questions and his ten minutes is up, he's, he can still talk.
What are you thinking, Ricky?
I'm thinking if you had a whole room of people, you'd be here all night.
You'd shoot a long time and it could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would, would there be, um. A, a cap on that? I mean, would you have public, um, input for one hour or would you, could you cap it? Just to say we wouldn't be here till midnight on a simple little issue?
There, there, as, as long as you consistently en- enforce the rule.
Oh.
Of, there are some places that have, some localities have had unlimited time and unlimited number of times to speak. And that usually lasts until they hit a, there are one or two meetings that go to one o'clock in the morning.
Oh, no.
Typically, and I know on the other extreme, I've seen it go down to as little as two minutes. You got two minutes. You know, um, I think the three to five is a good marker, you know? Um, and as people know that and they see it consistently applied, then they're okay with it, but a cap on your total number of time, um, I'm not too sure about that.
I don't think you can for a public hearing. For a public hearing, you have to stay and.
You can limit the individual speaker, but you can't limit.
And you all could make a.
The public forum, um, from a certain time to a certain time.
Like not beyond.
And not beyond a certain time.
You could always take, um, you know, if you see you got forty people for public hearing, you can make a comment beforehand or take a vote beforehand to change that five minutes to three.
In the meeting?
Mm hmm.
Before everybody starts.
You wouldn't be able to change the whole time a lot.
Only one hour, no, not to exceed one hour of public comment. I don't think.
Don't do public comment. You only do public hearings, so.
And council has five minutes, correct? What is, what does council do?
Council does five minutes for public, for both.
I, I would worry about making it shorter than that just because we have older people who it takes them a while to get up and then it may take them a few minutes to gather their thoughts and.
Yeah.
You know, three minutes is so short.
So far.
When, when we run a clock, we run a clock usually after the person stands there and says.
Yeah.
Um, Joe Citizen and I'll live at one, two, three, main street. Then we start the clock.
Right, yeah.
And also, um, section three point four suspending rules. You can suspend your rules or change your rules. It just, you need to have a unanimous concern, concurrence of the members present.
So if we had some issue where the room was packed and there were people in the hallway and we had fifty people signed up, then we could say in the interest of everyone being.
Probably before anyone starts speaking.
Yes.
To change their.
So like three minutes.
Right, before you even, um, open the public hearing, you would, you all would have to make that decision.
Could you, could you specify that, that no speaker gets more than one turn?
Yes.
Yes, it says that in here that everybody can, can come only, only once. You can't.
It does say that.
You can't concede part of your time to the next speaker so that they get eight minutes and.
I guess I'm getting picky now. Uh, how about family members, you know, if a husband spoke and then a spouse spoke and then their son spoke?
Yeah.
I think we've had them.
You have to.
That's, that's three speakers and you can do that.
Yeah.
But, but I, I will say the last, the most recent contentious one we had was the, you know, the one with all the parcels behind the firehouse.
Yes.
And we had, I mean, the room was pretty much filled. But people even then were pretty good about saying, well, I want to echo what Joan Smith said.
Uh huh.
And I think it's really important that we consider that and that down.
Yeah.
So the people were, you know, no, were, they were, yeah.
And the other thing too is you do have a limit. Under order of business, it says, um, except as provided herein, no regular, special or closed meeting or public hearing of the commission shall continue after nine P M. But such meeting or public hearing shall be continued or adjourned to another date.
Oh, good.
That's a, that's a good rule. So they can continue to.
Right.
Right, so and if you wanted to choose ten P M, if you wanted to choose eight P M, you know.
So retired.
I figured three years, yeah, three, three years. Three hours is, is probably about the most that somebody can really take in what's being presented.
Yeah.
Um, and so then you would just.
You know, dad's got to travel home and whatnot, you know?
Right. You would just continue it to the next meeting if you still had people who wanted to speak.
Right.
If, if you all were discussing and trying to make your decision, um, and it becomes nine o'clock. You have the option also. You can either say. Yeah, you'd have to have a consensus. You can either say, let's just finish this now or let's come back at another time.
But I think, I think the safety of, if we do have an issue like that where the room is filled, that we can before the hearing starts decide that you only get three minutes.
It also said if this, if, if it needs to go beyond nine P M, we are going to make a second meeting to continue with a public comment.
Right.
Everybody will, just setting the bar and the expectation from the get go.
Right.
Right.
Right, and that's why you have the, um, rules of procedure.
Yes, yeah.
They're your rules, your procedures, so you do them the way you want. And, um, it, it, if, it, excuse me, it applies to the planning commission. So they're not enforceable by law. They're your rules. Nobody can go, well, your rule says, you know, five minutes and now you're telling me three. They're your rules, they're not the public's rules.
But it still gives us protection.
Yes.
So when somebody complains, well, wait a minute, there's a limit, yes, or.
Yes, and then you could say, yes, and then under this section, it says that we can.
Yeah.
With, you know, unanimous consent, we can forego that.
Yeah.
The trick with this is consistent application.
Yeah.
Because the first time you let somebody else come back, oh, I forgot to say something. That's the second time that you're at the podium?
Yeah.
Now you've just opened the door that everybody.
And that's.
Yeah.
Planning commission, yeah.
Yeah.
It happens a lot at town council and, but that's the mayor who should. Right. He doesn't. Did he shut you down?
Yeah, I was talking about the sooner one down.
Oh.
Yeah.
But he doesn't consistently. Some people go on and on and some people ramble up.
Yeah.
So you just kick me and say, Mary, I don't know.
Alright, so I think you still need to take your actual vote.
Still need to take.
Unless you have any other questions.
Is there any further discussion or are you ready?
So what happens now?